We'll call this, we'll call this council meeting of February 25th order. Would you please call her all, please?
Shivers.
Here.
Briggs.
Yes.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
First item's approval of minutes of February 11th, regular session.
I move we approve the minutes.
Second.
February 11th.
Second.
Shivers.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Nichols.
Stain.
Williams.
Stain.
Miller.
Yes.
Next item under new business resolutions, bill number 2019-19, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract of obligation with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources regarding estimated post-closure expenditures for the City of Mexico Sanitary Landfill Permit Number 0100703, reading by title on me passage, Mr. Schlegel.
Yes, Your Honor, annually, we need to update the financial assurance on the closure of the city's landfill, and to cover the details, we'll turn to Roger Haines.
City Council, in 1998, the city closed the sanitary landfill and began a 30-year post-closure process as required and regulated by the Missouri Department of Natural Resources. As part of the post-closure process, the City of Mexico prepares an estimate of annual and cumulative costs related to post-closure activities and submits the report to the state. This year's staff will submit the executed contract for obligation along with the updated financial assurance instrument to DNR noting the potential post-closure cost estimate of $124,426. As of September 30th, 2018, which is the city's fiscal year end, the city had $158,244 in the post-closure fund, which is more than meets the requirement of funds anticipated to cover estimated expenses for post-closure. Based on the city's financial assurance instrument to be submitted, the city's standard and poorest credit rating of AA minus, and the success of our post-closure funding mechanism, the city will be able to enter into a contract of obligation without being directed to expend funds to purchase an insurance policy, namely, the Missouri Department of Natural Resources taxing additional insurance for estimated post-closure expenditures. Staff recommends council proceed with the reading by title on me passage of the resolution authorizing the city managers to sign the contract of obligation with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources. Anybody answering questions?
How many more years are we going to do this?
There's nine in post-closure, plus what they call five years of that person, 14 years total.
14 more?
Yes.
What's it cost to say at least for post-closure expenses?
Excuse me?
What do we have to do to it annually to post-closure?
The DNR has a formulation sheet that I go through and make new calculations. It's based on the 22 acres of landfill that's actually in post-closure. They take that times the $265 an acre for what they consider maintenance, going back to when it was first closed, and then we go through what they call a gross domestic product implicit price deflator calculation, which basically is an inflation factor, and we multiply that annual rate of maintenance times remaining years, which is the nine in post-closure, plus the five in buffer, and that's how we come up with the $124,426.
Now, that's not, what does it cost us a year? 5,000, 10,000?
Actually, 1,000 or less.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry, I'm just interrupting.
I was gonna say, you're getting bigger than I am.
DNR does an annual inspection. They actually come on site, and if there are settlement areas, we'll add some dirt. If the grass has died, we'll seed some grass, and we have to maintain the fence around it. That's basically what the maintenance amounts to.
Right. Thank you.
Well, this is all said and done, do you want to sell it? Or not?
Once it is released by DNR, it would be available to put on the market, or do something else if the city uses it for public good.
Charles Plager.
Make a motion to read bill number 2019-19.
Second.
Shivers.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bill number 2019-19, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract of obligation with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources regarding estimated post-closure expenditures for the City of Mexico Sanitary Landfill Permit Number 0100703. I move for passage of bill number 2019-19.
Second.
Shivers.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Next item under new business is bill number 2019-20, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to sign a contract documents with Rad A Baker Construction for the whole street project. Mr. Schlegel.
Yes, Your Honor, we are actually getting closer to getting a street, Bill. And the bids have been taken to cover the bids of what we've got. Turn to Kenzie Russell.
Yes, I'm happy to report that we actually have bids that are in budget, and that we have MoDoc concurrence in the low bid with Rad Baker Construction, and what remains now is to get the contracts signed, get the bonds and insurance in hand, and we'll be able to have a pre-construction meeting and proceed with the construction. Just as a brief review, this is Aid to Innovation Development Grant from the Federal Highway Administration. It will use compacted concrete, which is an innovative paving methodology, and the subcontractor to Rad Baker actually is the developer of the technology that we'll be using. We did have four bids that were submitted, Rad Baker being the lowest bid, and Mr. Baker did our airport apron, and he did some of the annual concrete maintenance work as far as a couple of years ago, so we do have some experience with him here in town. He's from Fulton area, so also happy to say that we have a regional contractor, if you will, or from the region, that can do the work. Again, note that we are in budget with it, and would recommend reading the passage with the authorization to sign the contract.
Charles Plager.
We read, first reading of bill number 2019-20.
Second.
Shivers.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bill number 2019-20, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to sign contract documents with Rad A Baker Construction for the whole street project, TIDP 4400310. I move for second reading of bill number 2019-20. Shivers.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bill number 2019-20, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to sign contract documents with Rad A Baker Construction for the whole street project, TIDP 4400310. I move for passage of bill number 2019-20. Shivers.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes. Yes.
Next item under other business, staff report, purchase of an off, an asphalt recycler for the Public Works Department. Mr. Schlegel.
Yes, Your Honor, we've taken bids, bids received. We'll turn to Kenzie Russell.
This is a piece of equipment that we think will really help the efficiency of the street department when it comes to patching on our asphalt streets. We had six bids that were supplied to us for a recycler, and five of those bids were needing the specs. We're recommending that the bid for a demonstration unit for a crack coating be accepted. The bid, the lowest number bid there was for what's really known as a hot box. It's just an insulated box that heats material. While the recycler allows for material to be stirred, if you will, additional virgin asphalt or additional oil can be added to the millings or to the asphalt chunks, and stirred and mixed properly, as well as being heated, and so it's more of a true recycling type of process. We would anticipate using this where we mill out areas, as well as for potholes, and the millings have always been a disposal problem for us. This will allow us to actually take advantage and reuse those millings. The estimated cost for a ton of recycled asphalt, even with adding some additional rejuvenation oil to it, is about half the cost of a ton of virgin asphalt that we would have to go and get from plants, so we believe that there will be cost savings in our maintenance, as well as some efficiencies of not having to send a truck, have to turn around. Estimated quantities have potential waste. If we have leftover material at the end of the day, it can be reheated and reused the next day, whereas right now, we just end up trying to find a place to dump it out. So there are a number of efficiencies and cost efficiencies that we think can be an advantage here. The cost is more than what we had originally budgeted for. The budget was originally for a hot box, but as we got to studying and looking at the equipment, we realized that there was a better option out there on the market. We did go over to Columbia. They purchased this exact same unit. In fact, I think there's a press release within Packett, they are home of it. We were able to see it in operation and talk with their Public Works crews so that we could get a viewpoint that wasn't just a salesman's viewpoint, so that they're very pleased with the unit, find that it has, I believe they estimate reduced their costs to about 40 percent, or by about 40 percent there. So we are asking for the purchase of a piece of equipment that's a little bit higher in cost than what we had budgeted. We do have some additional funds from cost savings and other line items, and out of some reserves, so we do have funds available for it. So we're asking for a motion to allow for the purchase of this piece of equipment.
How did they get 17 years' life out of it?
That's what the manufacturer tells us that the equipment life is. This is not a new technology on the marketplace. It's one that's been around for a while.
It seems like Columbia's 17 years already be a lot different, as far as how much you use it.
We anticipate using it throughout a number of months of the year. It can be used through the winter, for instance, where the asphalt plants shut down, and normally we couldn't get hot mix, so that'll give us a higher quality mix to use for patching during cold months, but it'll also be available to use during our regular patching season in fall and spring. We're really rolling up on pothole patching time here with the freeze thaw type weather that we're getting, and so we'll use it more in Columbia, or, I mean, they do have more streets, and so they may fire that thing up more hours of the day, but 17 years comes from the manufacturer. That's a number that came from them.
Other questions?
Counsel, I would note for you that their bid price for the demo unit was the $77,525. However, it is subject to reduction based on the demo unit at the time we agreed to the purchase because of the hours, additional hours, and in fact, if you note that based on the additional hours in the reading, they've already reduced it to 73,000, so, but we had to accept the bid price at the time, and then that will, the ultimate price will be determined based on hours. It won't go up, it'll go down.
But the warranty?
Warranty, warranty's a brand new unit.
Warranty's the same. The servicing is provided by Richland, Missouri, Craft Co. is based out of Arizona, but the equipment distributor and servicing is out of Richland.
That's a great, sounds like a great deal.
I'm happy to purchase it.
Second.
Shivers.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes. Yes.
Next item would be the purchase of mid-mound mower for Cemetery Maintenance Department. Mr. Schlegel.
Yes, we've received a number of bids for the purchase of the mower for the cemetery. To cover the bids, we'll turn to Chad Schumaker.
Good evening. The annual budget allows $10,000 for the purchase of a discharged mower from the cemetery. Normally, you would see a trade-in on this particular piece of equipment. What we do is we send our old mower to the airport so that the airport manager can use that for mowing around the hangars and stuff, and then we trade that oldest piece of equipment in the system on the cemetery mower coming in. Unfortunately, that mower met a fiery demise this summer, and we went ahead and we moved the unit out there that would normally allow that unit to come in for the trade-in, so the trade-in unit is just scrapped. Enos Implementa here in Mexico was the best bid out of 12 vendors that we sent out to. We got a really nice bid return this time. We had eight people bring bids in. We had a couple of new brands, so it took us a few days to get through and look at some new brands. You will see that there are about four particular mowers that don't meet spec. We always encourage all these vendors, especially in this area, if they want to bid more than one machine, to bid more than one. The Hassler X1 is a lighter weight machine that does not have the fully isolated operator seat, which we have had workers comp problems in the past, when we have had machines that aren't fully isolated. And then the Skag Cheetah from TNT and O'Fallon is simply not a commercial model. It's a much lower grade model than the other models on the sheet, so, that said, we are recommending that you approve the purchase of the X-Mark Laser E series, and you'll see there is actually another X-Mark Laser E on the list from KGT on Monax, Kansas, so we're expecting a price at bid price of $9,293.
Thank you, Your Honor.
I make a motion we buy a mower from Enos Implementa here in Mexico.
Shivers.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Next item is the purchase of compact excavator for the Cemetery Maintenance Department. Mr. Schlegel.
Yes, Your Honor, this is for digging of graves, and we got a number of bids here as well, and again, we'll turn to Chad.
So the 1819 budget allows $45,000 for the purchase of a new compact excavator for Alumet Cemetery. The current cemetery backhoe will be traded in and replaced by this piece of equipment. The park superintendent came to me during the budgeting process last year, and after mechanical issues, the backhoe required work a couple times, we borrowed the 50G excavator from the Streets Department as our backup to dig graves. Staff liked it. It works really well for us, and it is a significantly less expensive piece of equipment than an actual backhoe is. So we sent out for bids, we placed ads in the Mexico ledger, and we received bids from six vendors, with Martin Equipment of Ashland, Missouri submitting the best bid for a John Deere 50G for a total price of $32,500. We are recommending that council approve the purchase of John Deere 50G compact excavator from Martin Equipment of Ashland, Missouri, for a price of $32,500.
What's the major difference between the GX FF and the compact?
That's what I was gonna ask.
Which one are you looking at?
Between the two John Deeres, what's the major difference?
There's not. They're the same machine. One just put the full name, the full, one of them put the full model name out, and one did, but is the exact same machine.
Anybody like that deal?
I move to purchase the excavator, John Deere excavator, from Martin Equipment of Ashland, Missouri.
Second.
Shivers.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Next item, staff report, is playground pool admission fees.
Yes, it's been a number of years since we've looked at these fees, and with changes in salary and everything, we felt it was time to look at them, and so Chad will cover the recommendation from the park board, and what they're proposing.
So when we developed the budget for this current year, there was no proposition fee on balance at that time, and as I'm sure you know, we are not required to pay the full minimum wage amounts that will be required by a proposition fee that passed November 6th, this past November 6th. However, our lifeguards and pool managers are certified employees, and you actually have to pay significant amount of money to take the test to have the job, and as we started looking at this, my staff felt very strongly that we would have a heck of a time filling these positions if we weren't keeping up with market rate for youth in the city, especially right now, when this is particularly low. So we can't really safely operate a playground school without full staff, and we didn't feel like it was a position that we could staff with people who are not top-line employees, but they are, they're mentally and physically difficult jobs at times, and we have had situations in my time here where somebody's life, you know, somebody's medical treatment, and Steve's not, he's been to a few of those, relied on a 16-year-old making the right decision and doing the right thing when somebody had a medical need. So that said, our pool admission fees are not adequate to offset the cost of increased wages, and there was a wage sheet in each group packets that the staff went through to correct those numbers, not only what it would cost us to run this year, and the next year, and the year after, but moving into the idea that we're going to be building a pool at some point in time, as we pass, as we're looking at. The pool was built in '86. We raised fees in 2004, and this will be the second time we've raised fees since that time period. We really tried hard to keep these fees down, counsel's correction, because we want to make sure that everybody that needs access to the pool has access to the pool, but we also can't afford to take a $6,600 loss this year, and a $13,000 loss the next year, if we're trying to save money in the park fund, in the general fund, to build a new pool. So that said, staff is recommending the admission comparisons, could the admissions have changed to what you see on the yellow line? I can go through it if you all haven't had a chance to read it before let the standards submitted. We took this to the park board, we had a discussion with the park board, and the park board, again, voted unanimously to recommend that council change the fees to schedule you see on smartphone.
Questions?
So the fees on this, are the new fees, the fees on the sheet, the yellow?
Correct. The yellow would be the new one.
So 2018 is what we currently charge, is the last. So, just accuracy, how is, I've never been to Vandelia and Centray, how are their pools able to do cheaper than we are? Are they smaller, or what?
Centray is a significantly smaller pool, but they won't be cheaper than us. I mean, right now, we're at $2, and they're at $3.50. We'll be at $3 for a youth male if they're at $3.50.
I was just looking at like their three.
Same as Vandelia, four dollars. Overly is that, what?
Three dollars.
Three dollars. Columbia's Oakland, that's somewhat of a special circumstance, I'd say. That's in a, that's one of their bigger pools, but it's in a lower-income neighborhood. I think they priced it accordingly, and kudos to them. It was the same thing we've always tried to do, but I would guess, and we haven't heard incorrect feedback from these other cities yet, because we're all in the same situation where this wasn't anybody's radar, you know, before the amendment hit them, and the other thing I'll say is Columbia has a significantly larger hiring pool because of college students than we do people this age, so it may not affect them quite the same as it does the rest of them.
Yeah.
But we don't know. I mean, we're talking about the future, so.
When was the last time we raised?
2004.
15 years ago. That's what I thought you said.
I wasn't looking at like the regulator, I was looking at all the other stuff, you know, like they've got free admission.
The vast majority of your admissions are.
15 years ago.
Yeah.
That's 15 years. That's a long time without a.
I would say community burden through eighth or ninth grade is the vast majority of your admissions, and that parents, you know, is a smaller, is the next small proportion.
I was just curious.
Charles Plager.
Thank you. I move that we accept the recommended playground pool admission fees.
Second. Shivers.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Next item are claims, payment of claims.
Next one's the claims.
Shivers.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes. Next item are comments by the council. Mrs. Briggs, you're first.
I can hardly talk. I was listening to his thing about the potholes in the streets, and I was thinking, it has been so cold this year that probably there hasn't been as much wear and tear on the roads, but anyway, I'm looking forward to warmer weather.
What really gets to us is like this week's forecast where it's above freezing during the day and then below freezing at night.
Oh, yeah, then you start getting the freezing and thawing.
That's what it is, what it does to.
Mr. Williams.
I'll add on to that, and to be honest, the worst I've seen is, I think the state's gonna have more problems than we have. I've seen quite a few problems through there, and I don't know, do they, I've never seen as many problems this year at Liberty and Agriculture as I have this year. They decrease the number of people that they've thrown through, I mean, you know, anything? I mean, it's really been slicked through there a lot of mornings, and I mean, I've lived in that area the whole time, never noticed it before, but.
Without looking at the historical weather records, my guess is it's been wetter this winter, and the additional soil saturation and runoff across that low spot is, and it re-freezes at night, I think that's been the issue probably, it's just it's been wetter this year, I suspect.
Yeah, I didn't know if there's some selling or something, because it's, he probably knows what I'm talking about, even. It looks like a pothole almost, most mornings.
It's a low area with no grains, really.
Yeah, so, yeah, but you guys, pass on to your guys. I mean, it's been a tough winter, and they've done a really great job, so appreciate it.
Mr. Nichols.
It amazed me. We had a 20-inch snow. The only place I ever heard is about people perking the snow routes, and nobody explained about, how come the city's not moving the snow out of the way? Just on the snow routes. But yeah, when we had a 2-inch snow, how come the city's not moving the, anyway, you guys did a great job.
Dr. Shivers?
We just had a couple of really good, we had the community prayer, community prayer service on yesterday, I almost said breakfast. That was really nice. Quite a few people came out, and also got to go to the Black History Program at Emmons Hall. That was good, too, so.
Mr. Schlegel.
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Back to me, and y'all have already said it all. Good job. I want to know, Mr. Russell, when is the snow pile, we have a pool going at our store, when the snow piles gonna melt? Have you got any predictions?
I don't have any predictions. Maybe the end of March, usually.
Oh, we got some mid-Aprils in there.
May, six.
May, six.
Do you want to put a dollar on that?
My birthday, yay!
At this time, we allow public comments. If you'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and try to hold your comments to three minutes. Seeing nobody come forward, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Shivers.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Yes.